I'm going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. Can I have a board member certify closed session, please?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I certify that the best of each member's knowledge that Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted in the open meeting requirements stated in the Virginia law. As only, oh, and that only such public matters were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ortego.
Aye.
And can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Henley. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Chen. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Henley.
Aye.
Mr. Riffle.
Aye.
Dr. Cavassos.
Aye.
Ms. Chen.
Aye.
Mr. Hoseng.
Aye.
And Mrs. Ortego.
Aye. All right, now we will move on to student recognitions. And tonight, Mrs. Henley is going to be reading our recognitions, right?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman. Tonight, we are excited to honor the Lafayette High School Boys Soccer Team for being named the V H S L Class Three State Champions. Please come forward to be recognized as your name is called. Clark Canova. Michael Gallagher. Henry Jimmerick. Hi Moore. And Drew Reese. Ever Salamanca. Jackson Troy. Nicholas Valenti. Once again, congratulations to the students and the coaches who are Mr. Bobby O'Brien and Mr. Gavin Arsenault. They are outstanding accomplishments this year. And thank you, Madam Chairwoman. This concludes our recognitions this evening.
All right, we will now move on to Section Five, Announcements and Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Summer school is in full swing. Third graders are applying their writing and math skills to weekly garden-based field sprouts lessons. While second and fourth graders are testing their math skills with ship-led cooking lessons. Additionally, the Williamsburg Regional Library continues its longstanding support by providing weekly book deliveries and hosting book mobile visits for our students. For our secondary students, this year's One School One Book selection is the Fourteenth Goldfish. Teachers are using it as a daily read aloud paired with questions and discussions during the first fifteen minutes of class. Each day, teachers read a chapter or two and facilitate write pair share activities based on selected questions, reinforcing essential skills and maintaining student engagement. The program will culminate with students creating their own questions and having a final book discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my brief report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Summer school, well, it's fun. If you have to be in school in the summer, it looks like they're having a lot of fun things to do. All right, move on to Section Six, Proposed Agenda Items. And we will hear Item 6.01, Review Authorization of Signatures in the Absence of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we recommend the authorization of several people to sign in my absence. Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Daniel Kiefer, Deputy Superintendent, and Mr. Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence in my absence. And we ask you to consider this and vote at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Heron. Any questions? All right, we will move on to Item 6.02, Review Tuition Rates for Non-Resident Students.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to present this this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval. The tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year twenty-five budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years. The recommended tuition rate for regular education is thirteen thousand six hundred sixty-seven dollars, which is an increase of six hundred eighty-nine dollars or five point three percent over fiscal year twenty-four. The special education tuition rate is recommended to be twenty-three thousand two hundred thirty-nine, which is an increase of six hundred thirty-seven dollars or two point eight percent over fiscal year twenty-four. This is the base special education tuition rate, as each individual's needs are different, and additional costs would be added to the base rate based on services received, like speech or OT and PT services. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Board members, any questions for Ms. Ewing on this? Mr. Hoseng, you good? All right, then we will move on to the request to purchase ten school buses.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you. This agenda item is to purchase ten school buses from Sunny Merriman under Virginia state contract in the amount of one million five hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars. Funding in the amount of one million five hundred twenty-two thousand is included in the fiscal year twenty-five C I P. And the remaining amount of twelve thousand nine hundred eighty-six is available in completed project balances. Superintendent recommends that the board review the purchase request and be prepared to vote at the August sixth meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Riffle.
Are these all gas-powered cars?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough.
I'm going to ask a question that I had asked previously, just because I was, just for the viewing public. We, I think it's widely known that we have bus driver shortage, and we have a fairly large fleet. Can you explain why we are purchasing ten new buses?
Sure. Years ago, the division adopted a smoothing replacement plan, so, and the recommendation is to replace the buses once they reach fifteen years of age or over two hundred fifty thousand miles. And we currently have twenty-six that are at that fifteen age mark, so we annually replace ten buses, just to keep the fleet up.
And are those twenty-six all in use? Are we using the entire fleet?
We have a fleet of a hundred and sixty buses. I'm not sure, maybe a hundred.
It's also important to have a number of buses that can serve as spare buses and/or we use for parts. So, on a daily basis, no, we're not using a hundred and sixty. We have spares available for us. In the event that someone needs work on Bus One, we can assign them Bus Two for the day while that work gets done, and we can turn it right back around.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other questions, so we can move on. Item 6.04, we're going to review revisions to the Policy J N Appendix, Student Fee Schedule.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Annually, we bring this information to the board as well, and Dr. Worley is going to present the changes to the board this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. Each year, we do update the board on Appendix A of Policy J N on Student Fees, Fines, and Charges. This is not a policy change, but it's an annual update to the fee schedule, which is Appendix A connected with the policy. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we do have one additional fee to bring before the board. We added forensic science as a middle school science course, and there is a ten-dollar fee associated with the course. As a reminder, each year, driver's ed fees are set by the Virginia Department of Education in September, and we will be communicating that with students during class. Also, students are eligible for fee waivers. Courses with fees are noted in the Program of Studies. The online version of the Program of Studies has a direct link to the fee waiver form for students and families. And the link will also be made available on school websites, and hard copies of the fee waiver form are available in the school counseling office as well as the main offices. Families will know about the fee waiver opportunity through our family newsletter this fall and through their initial login with VIEW. Students and families will have to acknowledge the fee waiver form before making a direct connection with VIEW. Teachers will also be reminded to share information about fees and fee waivers during class. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Worley. Are there any questions? Mr. Hoseng?
Yes, I'm just questioning, I guess, how much money the parking fees for the high school students come in. Just trying to think outside the box, if we don't have those fees, if more students do drive, would that alleviate some issues regarding the bus drivers? Would that alleviate some of the issues that we have in the drop-off and pickup lanes? Just trying to come up with some better idea as opposed to charging students to park.
So, we do have a fee for parking that's used for a variety of things at the school and at Central Office. The presentation this evening was directly related to the fee schedule for an addition for one course. We could collect more information on that for you.
Ms. Hoseng, if you have specific questions, we'll be glad to do an S B Q that we can provide for all board members on parking fees.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I think we are ready to move on. And we will move into our list of policies. So, Point 01, we're going to review revisions to Policy D A, Management of Funds.
Dr. Kiefer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. First policy to review this evening is Policy D A, Management of Funds. Some of you may remember that we just revised this policy in August of twenty-twenty-three, and it's a tad bit unusual for us to bring one back this quickly. However, there was a code revision that we needed to update, and the V S B A and their annual review of policies provided that information to us. So, the one item that you'll see in this policy in terms of an update is a legal reference update.
Okay. Pretty straightforward. Any questions? Let's move on to Seven Point 02.
Yes, ma'am. I G B A, Individualized Education Programs for Students with Disabilities. This policy was last updated in October of twenty-nineteen. The revisions that we are bringing forward this evening bring us into alignment with the V S B A model policy, as well as a recent code revision that requires school divisions to designate a faculty member to serve as a special education parent family liaison and to publish that information online. W J C C had been ahead of that by publishing the name of our school division liaison on our website for some time. However, we needed to include that in the policy, and you'll see that on lines twenty-three, excuse me, twenty-two through thirty in terms of that inclusion. Not the person's name, but the fact that we need to include their name on the website.
Okay. Any questions about this one? All right, it looks like it. So, we will move on to Seven Point 03, Policy A G.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The next four policies that we're bringing forward this evening are really related to the Virginia Literacy Act and the creation of that act. And in essence, it becomes a school division's responsibility to ensure policies and regulations are in line with the act. The first one we're bringing forward to you this evening is the Policy A G, which would be a new policy for W J C C. This is a policy that we would be adding to our policy manual in an effort to ensure that we are in alignment with the Virginia Literacy Act. The language that you see in front of you from lines seven through eighteen, actually, seven through twenty-one, generally come from the V S B A model policy and will ensure that we are on track for the V L A.
Any questions?
I'll also mention that in terms of a regulation to accompany the policy, there is a regulation that we have drafted in order to spell out some of the more specifics of the Division Literacy Plan that you previously approved. That regulation will be uploaded to our policy manual as well for the public to see. The technical aspects that are in the regulation really are operational in nature, and sometimes they may change based on the fact of revisions at the state level, which is why that's in the regulation itself.
Okay. I think the draft of that regulation was included for board members.
That is correct.
Okay. All right, we good to move on, everybody? All right, we can move on to Seven Point 04.
Seven Point 04, Revision I A, Instructional Goals and Objectives. The V S B A has made some suggested revised language for I A, and they did that in their May twenty-four policy update. And that, again, is to align with the V L A legislation. You will see on lines sixty-seven through sixty-nine of the policy that we made, we removed the subject of reading from the statement. Am I in the right place? I apologize. I am in the right place. Okay, great. So, we've removed, in fact, we're...
Yeah, because that has its own policy.
I'm sorry. We've added it, right?
Yes.
Yes. I've got the wrong thing in there in my notes. My apologies. So, the, we're adding a Program of Literacy Instruction that is aligned with science-based reading research and provides evidence-based literacy instruction. So, that is an inclusion in the policy that wasn't previously there. And in other places, we have removed the reading and reading from the policy itself.
Right.
I apologize for that.
Any questions? Okay, moving right along. Seven Point 05.
Yes, new policy that we're bringing forward this evening, again, related to the Virginia Literacy Act. It is I G B D, Programs for Students with Reading Deficiencies. This proposal is to help ensure that those students specifically with reading concerns are addressed in a policy statement. There is a corresponding regulation that spells out how we will go about ensuring that the policy is followed. The language of the policy itself is from the V S B A model, and then we've created that regulation as a follow-along.
Any questions? So, this is brand-new.
It is brand-new.
Can you explain why, maybe you just said it, was it from requirements from the...
Virginia Literacy Act has some specific requirements related to students with reading deficiencies.
Okay.
And the way we would go about addressing that with parents and students is really provided in the regulation itself.
And does it deviate from what we've been doing? Is this new?
Let me ask Rob, and I believe there's some specific requirements that come with the new V L A.
Previously, school divisions were required to provide students who demonstrated difficulty with reading skills interventions. The Virginia Literacy Act very specifically identifies that those students must be identified using either the PALS screener that we've talked about previously, previously known as PALS, or the Virginia Standards of Learning Test. So, the Virginia Literacy Act very specifically identifies the screeners that will be used to identify students who need additional support. It also goes on to state that students who demonstrate substantial deficiencies, according to the bands of student performance for both of those assessments, must have reading plans. And that those reading plans must identify the interventions that students would receive, must be regularly monitored so that we know how our students are responding to instruction. That reading specialists need to be involved in the development of that reading plan, which, again, is an additional layer in the legislation. And that parents certainly should be a part of the process and have the ability to receive a copy of the plan. And as part of the plan, additional resources to support their child around specific skill deficiencies at home. So, it's much more discreetly spelled out as to what our responsibilities are.
Okay, so this does change pretty drastically, then, from what we've been doing, or what was our process before?
I feel like we have had a very good finger on the pulse of our students through, again, the PALS screener and other assessments that we use across our schools. So, we know who our students who need additional help are, and we have addressed those needs. Typically, those needs are addressed first through a form we call a Student Assistance Plan, which is not, doesn't vary widely in nature from the student reading plan that the state has provided. But this data is now saying we must use their template, and we must have all of these components in place.
Do you anticipate the number of students needing intervention to rise because of these changes?
I think the unknown right now is that because the PALS assessment has undergone significant revision, and this fall will be the first time we will be using it across the state, it's the first time we will have seen it here in W J C C. Anytime they change the construct of an assessment and the content, there can be a dip. There can appear to be a dip in student performance because they may be measuring student skills in a different way or combining subsets of scores in a different manner. So, it's unknown. We're very hopeful, based on our spring PALS scores, that our students' foundational skills are strong, stronger than they've ever been. But we will have to wait and see what the PALS assessment looks like.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Henley.
I have a question. So, for our students that are E L L, is there anything different that happens with them and their families? I know sometimes if the parents aren't fluent in or literate in the language and the children take the, are they still taking all the same assessments? And so, is there anything different for them?
No, in all likelihood, a student who may be at a Level One, Two, or Three as an English learner will have a LEAP plan. So, a language instruction plan specific to the instruction that that child would receive from the LEAP teacher. But then that child would also most likely qualify for a reading plan, so they would have two plans.
So, the state has sent the approved plan for that?
The state says that all students who don't meet the benchmark for moderate to low risk, so, anyone who's in the high-risk band on PALS must have a reading plan, regardless of the other plans they have.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from board members? Looks like everybody is good. Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. The last one in this gripping would be a new policy, and this is Agenda Item Seven Zero Six, Policy I K H, Retaking S O L Assessments. Again, we have not currently had a policy related to the retake of S O L assessments. However, with the Virginia Literacy Act, we felt like it was important to clearly delineate via policy when a retake of the S O L would be necessary for students. So, that's the language that you'll see in that policy.
Okay. Any questions? No, okay.
Thank you. Moving to...
Seven Point 07.
Yes, Seven Point 07, I K A, Grading Systems. This particular policy has needed some revision since it's been a couple of years since we last looked at it. We are attempting to provide the grading scale information in an easier way for people to understand. So, substantively, there's only one change in the policy, and that's the actual grading scale. It's used between third and twelfth grade versus the way it reads in policy right now, fourth through twelfth. So, our current practice is that we use it in third grade, so we're revising the policy there. And then we're also trying to format it in a way that makes sense to folks, because as we understand it, the way it's currently listed in our policy is difficult to discern.
Okay.
I do have a question.
All right, Mrs. Henley.
So, what does K two, if they get letter grades, I know they don't get As, Bs, Cs, Ds. How does, how do you explain that to a K two person? Is there a policy for K two?
Grades in K two, how do we provide assessment of student learning in K two?
Because they do get grades, but it won't, is this going to apply to their grades?
Is it not like the letter formulation, like satisfactory?
Yeah, S or proficient, right?
But they get, so if they take a test and they get a, let's say, a seventy-five, that could be a P, but is that a two?
No, what we have in kindergarten to grade two doesn't equate to the letter grades received in grades three through twelve. So, that's why this particular policy delineates grades three through twelve. And we keep those proficiency ratings or descriptors separate in K two.
So, there's a different, like, there's a different table for, right, a different code section. It's not defined in our code, though.
We're not doing grade point averages in grades kindergarten first and second, either.
You see, what, do you have to follow up?
We're not delineating that P proficiency is equating to a four point O.
I've just, I've just heard some conversation is how does, how, if a child gets something on a letter grade, could the letter grades correlate to a P in whatever the, you know, you have an S, I don't know what they use now. What do they use, Needs Improvement, Improve, just...
The grades should not equate to those descriptors in grades K one and two.
Okay, all right.
So, we're not recommending that they align. In fact, it's two separate ways to review...
Again, we we have not currently had a policy related to the retake of S O L assessments. However, with the Virginia Literacy Act, we felt like it was important to clearly delineate via policy when a retake of the S O L would be necessary for students. So that's the language that you'll see in that policy.
Okay. Any questions? No, okay.
Thank you, moving to.
Seven point zero seven.
Yes, seven point zero seven I K A Grading Systems. This protect this particular policy has needed some revision since it's been a a couple of years since we last looked at it. We are attempting to provide the grading scale information in an easier way for people to understand. So substantively, there's only one change in the policy, and that's the actual grading scale. It's used between third and twelfth grade versus the way it reads in policy right now, fourth through twelve. So our current practice is that we use in third grade, so we're revising the policy there. And then we're also trying to format it in a way that makes sense to folks. Because as we understand it, the way it's currently listed in our policy is difficult to discern.
Okay.
I do have a question.
All right, Mrs. Henley.
What does K K two, if they get letter grades? I know they don't get A's, B's, C's, D's. How does, how do you explain that to a K two person? Is there a policy for K two?
Grades in K two, how do we provide assessment of student learning in K two?
Because they do get grades, but it won't, is this going to apply to their grades?
Is it not like the letter definition, like satisfactory?
Yeah, S or.
S O.
Proficient, right?
But they get, so if 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 they take a test and they get a, let's say, a seventy five, that could be a P, but is that a two?
No, what we have in kindergarten to grade two doesn't equate to the letter grades received in grades three through twelve. So that's why this particular policy delineates grades three through twelve. And we keep those proficiency ratings or descriptors separate in K two.
So there's a different like, there's a different table for, right, a different code section. It's not defined in our code though.
We're not doing grade point averages in grades kindergarten first and second either.
You see, what?
We're not delineating that P proficient is equating to a four point oh.
I've just, yeah, I've just heard some conversation is how does, how if a child gets something on a a a letter grade, could the letter grades correlate to a a P? In whatever the, you know, you have an S, I don't know what they use now, what do they use, needs improvement, improve? Just.
The grades should not equate to those descriptors in grades K one and two.
Okay, all right.
So we're not recommending that they align. In fact, it's it's two separate ways to review providing feedback on student learning.
And are we still? Was it in elementary or across the board that the lowest grade is a fifty?
Why do we have a fifty if we're not really paying attention to the numbers? If that's where I'm confused.
So one of the we we have a four point scale when it comes to quality points, four, three, two, one. And below a fifty nine is is a zero. Then individual teachers make some determinations about their grade bands and assessments within their course areas. So there there's not a division wide expectation that there's no grade below a fifty. If that's what your question was.
Okay.
Um, question.
Go ahead, Ms. Riffle.
I don't know, maybe this is me. When does the four point oh become like a three point nine, three point eight? It's not really, I don't think the scale's any easier to read now based off those letters, you know? Because you don't get a four point over getting an A minus, you get like something else, right?
Right, so anything between a ninety and one hundred qualifies you for a four point oh. And that that has been our practice.
Oh, wow. Dang, I should have gone to school here.
I I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Chen.
Why do we even have like minus plus? What what is the, what are the advantages of that? If if you get a between a ninety and hundred, it's a four point oh. And and in high school, it's just the grade point average, right? So so the the actual, like whether your average is a ninety two or ninety eight, it doesn't seem to really make a difference?
There are a couple of facets to that. One facet is communication between teacher and student in terms of learning on a particular assignment or set of assignments. The second facet, I think, becomes when you are utilizing grades to determine or calculate a student's grade point average. And a grade point average is, sometimes we do it incorrectly just as as individuals. But a grade point average is really based on credit attained and a score assigned at the end. So when you hear people saying, oh, I got a four point oh for the first nine weeks, that's that's in their mind, they've got a four point oh because they got all A's. But in fact, you don't earn a G P A in terms of until the course is concluded and a credit has been assigned. So so part of it is related to a grading scale where we have different numeric ideas associated with letters, but at the end of it, we assign a four, a three, a two, a one, or a zero based on where you fall within those bands.
The numerical average of the quarters, your your average at the end of each quarter, then all of that is average.
Well, it we might be hopping into a little bit of a rabbit hole in terms of how grades are computed within each individual class. And I I want to be careful because what what we are undergoing as a division is conversation certainly at the at at all three levels about what is the, what are the meaning of grades? And and what what are we intending for them to communicate to students, to families about student progress? So we have as a as an organization engaged teachers in conversations about grading practices and how do you assign a grade and what is the point value for this assignment versus that test versus this particular item, which I think are really important conversations to have. Similarly, they're difficult conversations because each of us has a different view or understanding of what those grades may mean. But in terms of, in terms of this particular policy, we are sharing that if you score between a ninety and a hundred, there's a four point oh assigned. Or if you score between an eighty and an eighty nine, a three point oh is assigned in terms of the, what I call the quality point, the thing that is going to be calculated into your grade point average relative to the credit. Does that make sense?
It makes sense, yeah.
I think the the table makes sense to me.
And it makes, it's easier to read, I think. How does one have a, sorry if I'm belaboring this, but how do you get then a three point nine?
Well, when you start to average grades together, there you you start to see a a differentiator when you divide the number of credits earned by the number of points that you've earned.
Okay. So I mean, like Ms. Riffle was indicating, that's that's great if you're in the four point oh bracket. But if you're in the three point oh bracket and you had an eighty nine, that's that almost works against you.
That's where I, that's where my question came from, like.
Right.
I haven't, I was a B student, to be honest, but we're not going to get a B plus, you know, but like, I think it's important that we define what an A plus means, like, that's four point oh. An A is like between this bracket, right, like, I don't, based off the numerical score. Like, this is like not any easier than just the lines we have before, it's just, it's in a chart, like, you know, it it still brings computer, I know that it's like done by course and we just talked about that, but I don't think like it makes it any better for us to be like, when someone is upset about their student's grade to the school board, we're like, they should have a four point oh, like, I don't know, that's where it comes out for me, yeah.
Well, and I I think the, I'm sorry, Dr. Heron.
Go ahead.
No, ma'am, you go first.
I think the changes to the policy right now are purposefully minimal because Dr. Worley has laid an initiative to really look at grades across high schools and middle school and how they're assigned and the value placed on on those grades. And so I do think there'll be an opportunity to discuss this more when we bring back potentially a different grading system over time.
Okay.
Worley, if you want to add anything to that, where we are in the process or?
We currently have, or we're one year in, we plan to continue digging in. We have focus focus groups across the division, K twelve actually, with Courtney Mom Point facilitating all of those, with groups of administrators, with groups of teachers, C N I people, central office people at each level. So we're collecting a lot of feedback to make some pretty significant decisions.
So more to come on grading.
Okay, um, Mr. Riffle?
And my final comment would be, my my question stemmed from, sorry, like, you can be seen as grade deflation if you're not, you know, if you're receiving an eighty nine and then, you know, it's four point oh, you're ninety one, so it's like, it does become a bit of a disparity for just like understanding the chart, so I just, so I I'm glad there's work being done. I don't really know how it affects our current students if we're saying like, there'll be a better scale, but maybe not for you. You know, that's where, I don't know, it becomes like horrible being helpful when we're, I'm ending this section right now, you know? I mean, all it takes is four board members to like make a new scale, tell how it is, you know, to an extent, like, so.
Well, I think.
And there's other other divisions that have skills that are like us, you know, like, why can't we just copy them, you know?
Well, for tonight, I think we're just going to focus on the chart for tonight. I think they will be presented with something and this will be expanded or modified in in the future. So I think that's where we are for tonight. Any other questions? Okay.
Last policy on our list for conversation this evening is I K B. It is in the Instruction Section, it's titled Homework. This particular policy was last reviewed in, excuse me, last revised in two thousand and one. There is not a corresponding V S B A model policy because the V S B A retired their policy related to homework in February of twenty twenty four. In our review of this particular policy, we felt like lines six through twelve from the V S B A model do a nice job of really defining what and how homework is important in the educational process. And then took the other parts of the policy, which really are lines fourteen through the end, fourteen through forty three, and included that in a regulation which allows us to administratively delineate for teachers and parents how homework is assigned, the value of homework, and some of those kinds of things.
Mrs. Henley?
I have a question, is this a K twelve? Because I know there was a time where elementary didn't have homework after COVID and then middle school could or couldn't, and then high school did. Or is this now new K twelve, everybody will have some type of homework?
We are, by way of the policy, neither by way of the policy nor the regulation, saying that homework is required each night for all students. What we are saying is philosophically homework is lines six through twelve. And in the regulation itself, here are the guidelines that should be considered when homework is assigned. So as an example, at the elementary school level, which is, we want to make sure that that's included in the regulation, homework should not be factored into that student's grade at elementary school. That's just one example.
Okay, do we have any other questions?
Yeah, I got a question.
Mr. Riffle?
I think it's pretty defined what homework is, and it just becomes very general. And and with the green, I understand it's from the V S B A. But the, I don't know, my question is like, number six, teachers should seek to determine the cause of students regularly fails to complete homework. Teachers should be given, should not avoid giving homework because they believe their students will not complete work. Like, this is kind of like, I don't I don't think homework's going away, but, I mean, it basically allows for like a a very large now flexibility in what homework is and what isn't homework. And it doesn't, then it doesn't have any points to say like how homework is described in this at all. It's it's not enough clarity in my eyes of is being, like, what, why would we go from something so large to something so small? Then, of course, we have the superintendent authorization, I just like, what is the thought behind it?
I I think our thought behind it is that we want teachers at all levels making decisions about assigning homework related to the items that were taught in class and were able to get accomplished in class. We want that hopefully to be a collaborative process that they use across their grade level or within their team if you're in the secondary level. One of the things that I think we believe administratively is that homework is is best done at home if a student already knows and understands the skill. And one of the challenges that we have, and I think we need to continue to work with teachers on, is that if homework is assigned, then great, but is that a skill that the student already knows how to be able to practice when they get home? Or does that become, I get home and I struggle with it because I don't really understand the skill, and now the house is struggling with it? And and we feel like the way the regulation has been crafted, taking the language out of the policy, is it empowers administrators and teachers to really talk about what is, what is the process that we'll use in our building, our grade level, our team in order to assign that homework, and what kind of value are we placing on it?
Follow up questions, are like data that is trying to driven, like, I I know we got it from the larger V S B A, but is there data for our own divisions, is like this is maybe more helpful way to describe homework in our own code section than we previously did? Like, is there like a, from the policy committee or something that like suggests that this is?
One of, yeah, to your question, Ms. Riffle, one of, one of the places that the the faculty groups that have been working with Ms. Mom Point and Miss and Dr. Worley has described is is conversation around what is, what is the value and meaning of homework in those grading conversations? And what I think that you will see, if we were to have a a survey of all teachers and the homework that they assigned, is that there would be a wide range of of rationales and reasons and type. And one of the things that we want to 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 better work on with our staff is, what does it mean when you assign that homework? And what is it that you're intending students to be able to practice once they get home? We, it's difficult, I think, to capture that nuance within a regulation. But I do think that the regulatory language in our conversation with building administrators and teachers as we start the year empowers us to do that.
Do, is it, is it not true then that we have a division wide policy that we do, or policy might not be the right word, but we do not assign any homework in elementary school and nothing in middle if it's not a high school credit course?
I I am not aware of that as an expectation.
Because that's what I've been told.
That's what I've been told.
As a parent and otherwise.
Since COVID, it changed.
No, it was before COVID.
Oh, okay.
Teachers at the elementary school level have the authority to assign homework should they see that it's appropriate to practice a particular skill. So there's no set regulation exempting students in the, at the elementary level from homework.
And Dr. Worley, secondary?
So at the middle school level, post COVID, we work to to minimize excessive amounts of homework because for some of the reasons that Dr. Kever was just sharing, we want to ensure that when students go home, for example, in a math class, if they were struggling with the content, we didn't want them to go home and be assigned, you know, odd questions, one through forty, with something that they don't understand, and then they practice it wrong for two hours, either on their own or with someone else. So we we want homework to be meaningful, and the message that we've said at the secondary level for the past couple of years is homework should simply be an extension of the learning that took place and something that's going to not be go do this assignment, but go practice or or even read to reflect on what happened in the classroom today. And then things at the high school level, if they're working on a project or a research report, obviously, that's a form of homework. But all back to the same conversation we're having tonight, what is meaningful, what is relevant? What reinforces what I learned in the classroom and how how is homework going to help the kid be successful?
So I'll summarize for anyone from elementary that might be listening, homework is important, but it is up to the teacher that can decide whether or not to give homework. It is not our policy saying that homework has to be given. Yes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Riffle?
Would it be possible for the Student Advisory Committee to look at this policy the next year? I just think it's important to get student feedback on there, the people who do this work. Like, I know we're talking about administrative, we're talking about, but I have not heard from students, like, if they care or don't care about homework. And now we're, I I just think it's like, I'm a big, like, let's talk to all the stakeholders, I think that's important, talk to our students who are receiving homework. Like, I think it, I think this policy is good, I don't, what the questions I had weren't like, from like anger, things like that, it's more like, I've never dealt with a homework policy before. Why are we reducing it so much? And I understand why, so I just would like to see the Student Advisory Committee to take this as a question. We talked about attendance last year, we talked about other items like this, this is a large part of their education in the K through twelve curriculum, so, or specifically in high school.
I think that's a good idea, Mr. Riffle, we can certainly ask for feedback. It is a pretty small group of students that come to the table for the Student Advisory Committee. And I know as we move forward, we would want input maybe to be even broader than that. But ultimately, we want homework to be well chosen, aligned with what's happening in the classroom, practicing concepts that students already know, so that it's valuable practice that makes them better and not practicing mistakes that they have about things they haven't even learned. So I think the the conversation is really important that we're going through right now, that if we assign it, it's very relevant and it helps the student get better at what they do.
Yeah, just one final comment, there's also an additional element, I think, to homework, which is learning to work independently and time management and being prepared for the expectations of the next level, whatever the next level you're going to go to in a gradual way, so that it doesn't all hit you when you get to ninth grade and you've never had homework before. So even if it's a very small amount and it's not graded, I think setting some level of expectation that in order to do well in any skill, you have to practice it or read or you should be always be reading to learn. Um, it's not, it's not just practicing a s- a skill, it's also other elements too, to time management and life skills, I think, so.
I'll just add one quick thing, I know that, Dr. Worley, you're you're looking into this and and lots of other folks are also looking into this. But it would be nice at some point to get some updates, I think, about what what the research research shows, what what works with our students. And also, there's a larger issue that with with homework and equity and and like supports at home and whether homework should or should not be graded and whether that's fair. So I think that's all part of, and I'm sure it's already is, I mean, I'm probably mentioning things that are already being discussed, but.
Yeah, that that's true, Ms. Chen, and particularly the equity issue in in terms of grading, because not every student has a support at home to accomplish and do their homework and commit and have a grade assigned to it. And Mr. Walker, certainly at the elementary school, that's a huge consideration if you want to speak to to that as well in the the grading of homework.
Again, it goes back to that reinforcement, that practice of the skill, whether that's reading independently, reading with a parent, practicing, applying some math skills through something. I think many of our teachers are very creative in how they ask the students to practice those skills throughout at home and across various settings. And that it should be best reflected at the elementary level underneath the section in the report card about work habits and effort, participation, and productivity with that piece of it and not grading those broad types of homework pieces that are assigned at the elementary level.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I think we are done with that one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kever.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, our two action items. Eight point zero one, approval of personnel actions, can I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented. Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye. And approval of the minutes, eight point zero two, approval of minutes from meeting, from the meeting on six eighteen twenty-four, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the minutes from the meeting on six eighteen twenty-four as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle. Can I get a second?
My second.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Ms. Aller.
Mr. Riffle?
Aye.
Dr. Cavazos?
Aye.
Ms. Chen?
Aye.
Mr. Hosang?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
All right, um, here, this is a short meeting, we'll move on to board member comments, um, Ms. Chen, can I start with you?
Um, sure, um, congratulations to the Lafayette soccer team, um, it's always a pleasure to have students come. Um, into our meetings and for us to give them a huge round of applause, um, so that's definitely. Was a highlight of tonight's meeting, um, and I hope that every, anybody listening out there is having a good summer, our students are. Safe and um, just wanted to mention one thing in particular, just as a public service announcement, if any of our families. Are looking for something to do that can benefit other students, and if you are able, um, I know that um. Meals on Wheels is partnering with a lot of different organizations in our community, um, to do lunches for our students, um. So if you want to donate your time or if you wanna donate baked goods, um, there's a great need for that, so. Yeah, just think that'd be a good opportunity for any students that are looking for something to do.
How would they find information or sign up?
I think every morning you can just drop off the baked goods. Our family's doing it at the Whisk or at uh any of the local churches, um, there, you can freeze them if you wanna make them in advance, you can. Drop them off, um, in the mornings, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Cavazos?
Uh, I've missed the last meeting, but I understand there was a lot of discussion about lacrosse and interest and. Um, I'm curious as to when we're gonna make the next step, as to making a definitive move and figuring out. The dynamics of the particulars of that program, if that's viable or not, um. I had lunch with one of the representatives from ESL and um. I understand that's a a developing program that's gonna be changing and we've got apparently a new leader, that's nice, so. I would be curious to see how that program develops and how it's really meaningful, because it's gonna become more of a burden for the division. And um, it's gonna take more money and I'm gonna wanna see how we, what the objectives are and how we achieve them, if we, if we achieve them, hopefully we do. Um, I once mentioned sometime in the past, and tell me where where we go with this, but um. We had a meeting up in um Charlottesville, I believe, and we were talking, I mentioned something about a moment of silence. At the board meeting and you said there's some particular time, somebody mentioned to me there's a particular time when that would be appropriate, and I just didn't want to get that lost.
I think we we plan to review our SOP at our retreat later this month.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Cavazos, um, Mr. Riffle?
Just not use it, oh, there we go. Thank you, thank you, I T gods, um, well, thank you, Madam Chair, um, I, I'm all supportive of homework, I just wanted, you know, I. Took, did homework recently, I think, everyone's seeing the board, so I think it's important that we kind of evaluate how the general functions of these things work, I mean. And I think we talked about a lot of policies today that, um, people didn't really have questions on, and I think the reasons for that really come back to. Um, this is a general state, um, some of this stuff is just kind of out of our hands for. Um, our ability to amend or really change what's happening, we just kind of need to define these things so that we can make policies moving forward. Um, the Virginia Literacy Act is a substantial piece of legislation that will move um Virginians across the Commonwealth, not just our own division. To higher literacy rates, so, um, I'm just impressed with how that's been rolling out and how our division's kind of taking it in stride, so I'm thankful for. Um, that that's been, that's been defined today and, and, you know, it's after July first, so there's a lot of new laws coming into Virginia's books. Um, which are good or bad, I don't know, it's up to you, it's still a state, so there's a lot of things that need to happen. But today was also a pretty big um announcement by the governor, he announced um Executive Order thirty-three, which is going to affect our division moving forward, um, moving towards. Removing of cell phone devices in our schools, and I know other divisions across the Commonwealth have started to look at this, um, with guidance in the V S B A, so. Uh, be interested to see how those partners work together, how that will affect our division, I think it is a, something I'm very supportive of. Um, as a substitute teacher in our division, I felt it was pretty tough to keep the the class moving at the high school level, um, without asking for them to take away their cell phones and. Um, that's, it's just disruptive to an extent and I understand the safety concerns people have and I think that's why I'm trying to address it now, I think this is something necessary, um, I think this is something that. Whether you like the governor or not, this is, this is ability that he has to kind of empower his own executive branch to do and look into. Um, and to affect boards like ourselves, so, uh, I think it's important that we bring that feedback to our division as we, so, this is gonna be, kind of maybe the next three months or so, that that'll be developed and. Pushed out, so I think that'd be great to hear from the public and their perspectives of this, um, because this, it's not a new policy, like, cell phones weren't in school like. A decade ago, and now they are, like rampant in schools, so it's like, this is something that we've grown into as a society, um, and I'd like to see that kind of what. Are the city and county residents feel about their, you know, whether they're students or their previous teachers, like, I think these opinions really matter, so we think about it, how we. And we really can't really change much of what comes from the DOE, but really what it comes into, like, how it is used in practice or how the principals go about doing, like, deal with this. Discipline on those actions, like, those are the things I'd like to see, um, our division kind of maybe tackle before they're kind of told to us, and a bit expand. Um, and then I am just looking forward to our retreat this this month, I think it's gonna be cool to kind of sit down and really. Get to some of our strategic goals and things that we should do as a division, there's, there's a lot coming at us in a couple, next couple, maybe next year or so. Sure, everyone's been reading the the press and I won't get into those issues and comment with the board in that way, but I I'm I'm very hopeful on like our relationships and how we can educate our students here in the joint division. Um, and I think there's a lot of things we can put in our strategic plan that really outline how we're doing a good job and how we're moving forward with the money we have and the people we have and. Um, and how, you know, we're constantly trying to progress forward, so, um, this is a testament to Dr. Herring and the people around the room here and this board for. Saying so fast and caring about students and kids and our our staff, so, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riffle, um, Mrs. Hunley?
Yeah, so it is summer and I almost forgot that we do have summer school until I heard about the fourteenth goldfish, so I'm hoping that um. Maybe Ms. Aller, we can be invited to one day of summer school, I'm curious as to what happened to the thirteen other goldfish. So I just wanna know about that, but, um, also, I I really love when we um recognize students and um. If you saw in the paper, Cassidy Lee was uh crowned Miss Teen Virginia, um, this month, and Faith Robinson was crowned Miss Juneteenth. Um, this month as well, and they're both now gonna be reigning, and then. You never know, Cassidy may be the next Miss Virginia, and both of them are War Hill High School students, so we never know where our influence lies, so. I just think it's always important, cause our students are gonna become really important people one day, and we'll say, I remember them when. So, and also to all the teachers who are teaching summer school, thank you, and to those that. Like my husband, who just wants to stay home and rest and do nothing, that's good too, so I hope everybody's having a. Relaxful summer and staying out of the heat and um till we meet again.
Thank you, Mrs. Hunley, and Mr. Hosang, you have any comments?
Uh, yes, very quickly, um, Mr. Riffle already touched on one, but I just wanna make sure that the board, the administration, and in particular, the parents were aware of the new. Um, executive order from the governor regarding the cellphone uh use in schools, so that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to deal with. I skimmed over the um order itself, and I think it's gonna be, they're gonna try and to implement it by January first of twenty twenty-five, so. Only have about six months to come up with the policy uh with this and get input from parents and everything, so I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that. Uh, two, regarding our retreat, um, that date is not on our website, so I just wanna make sure it's on the website, just in case no one's looking at our agenda. At this point, um, cause I know it's on our agenda for upcoming events, but was, I didn't see it on the, our website, so I just wanted. Confirm that that was gonna be on there, and the the final issue was, um, it was raised before, um, and and we voted. Regarding the um family life education of keeping boys and girls in the fourth and fifth grade separate, but there was also an issue that came up where. Boys were gonna be learning about the girls anatomy during the sex education and vice versa, yeah, I think that's something that we as a board need to look into. Cause that was a change in the curriculum, um, for the, for next year, and I think that we need to look into that before that goes into effect. And beyond that, I hope everyone's having a great summer and I'll see you at the end of August.
Good, thank you, Mr. Hosang. Yeah, I thought we had some good discussions this evening, um, I I, for one, am in support of. Of the content of the executive order, I know that the trying to get cell phones at least significantly out of, out of the hands of kids during class time is something that. The previous board um tried to do and 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 really cared about, um, and I think that. You know, it it's helpful if it is, if it is statewide and everyone has to do this together and and everyone understands. Why, why it's significant and why it's necessary, and uh the burden doesn't simply just fall on individual teachers to to enforce, um. You know, random decree, then uh I think this is, it could be a very good and helpful development. But yeah, I just, uh, beyond that, of course, congrats to the the Lafayette High School Boys Soccer Team, um, I have a. Rising Ram soccer player, so that's always, um, it's nice to see what what he might get to participate in at some point. Um, and thank you to all the staff and that continue to do the heavy lifting all through the summer, I know it feels like it's kind of. A little quiet and there's less going on because we don't have the the hustle and bustle of the of the daily school operations, but I know that. Just as much work um continues throughout the year for everyone here, so. Uh, thank you for continuing to slog away and get ready for next year, I do hope that all the students and teachers. Um, and any staff who have the summer off are are greatly enjoying their time. And uh being able to relax and refresh and spend time with family and doing some fun activities, um, before we ramp up again. Uh, so, um, that is all I have for tonight. I will conclude by mentioning our upcoming events and meetings, um. First event does say policy committee, but I believe that's been canceled, is that correct? So the policy committee will not meet on uh July eighteenth. Uh, the school board is having a retreat, as has been mentioned, um, on uh July twenty-second. At nine AM, we'll be using um some space at Christopher Newport University at One Avenue of the Arts in Newport News, Virginia, to have a. Uh, day-long retreat, uh, V S B A Conference on Education, we have a few uh board members attending that on um. July twenty-third, all day, at the Hilton in Richmond Hotel, Hilton Richmond Hotel, um, in in Richmond, Virginia. W J C C Coaches Night, um, also on the twenty-third at five PM at War Hill High School. And our summer school graduation ceremony on uh July twenty-fifth at three PM, also at War Hill High School. Um, and upcoming meetings. We have a closed session on August sixth at, starting at three fifteen, right here in room three hundred of the annex. Followed by work session and action items, also on the sixth at four thirty PM, here in room three hundred of the annex. After that, we have closed sessions on August twentieth, starting at five thirty PM in room three hundred of the annex, followed by a regular meeting. At six thirty PM in the James Blair Middle School Gymnasium. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.